Did you guys get cuts in your office?
Yeah, I think all of them. We have hydroelectricity.
They just don't rehire people and stuff.
There's a lot of people that don't have seasonal.
Innuendoers.
Ready?
I'm sorry, it's a little bit for him.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Good morning and welcome to Tulare County Planning Commission Board of Supervisors Chambers. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center via 5961 South Moonee Boulevard in Visaya, California. The staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the planning commission, see this last page. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. May we have the roll call, please? Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Caliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Mail erase mode.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th.
So moved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
And the vote. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. The consent calendar, action on all items in this section will be taken with one motion and vote unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over for such discussion. The consent calendar is an untimed item and may taken up at any time during the course of today's meeting, as time allows. Do we have anybody that needs to pull? Have comment on? Okay, thank you. We will begin. 4A, extension of time, EOT 16-004 for PSV 08003ZA, Heartland Christian Camp. It's a request for a two-year extension of time to May 27th for setback variance. Dana Metlin, do we have? Nothing?
I'll make that motion.
The consent item matters, so no presentation.
I'll make that motion unless there's other discussion.
Okay.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Parcel map public hearings, action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Do we have anything that the commissioners? Okay. 5A is tentative parcel map number PPM 16-014. Francisco and Blanca R. Martin and Daniel and Irma Delgado, California land surveying Don's Divers. This is a categorical exemption, a tentative parcel map number PPM 16-014 to divide one, 12.20 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel one, 5.91 gross acres, and parcel two, 5.91 gross acres in the M1MU, light manufacturing mixed-use overlay zone. The site is located on the southwest corner of Avenue 152 and Westling Road in Tipton. Our contact is Francis Torado.
And Planning Commission, this is a parcel map, a public hearing, so we take the items with no presentations.
Thank you. So I'll open the public comment period on this, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-014. Are there any comments on this that they would like to make? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this.
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with CEQA and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation 15315 pertaining to minor land division in urbanized area and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 16-014.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And the vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
B, excuse me. Tentative parcel map number PPM 16-005, Jose and Helen Rivera. This is Forester Webber and Associates LLC. This is a categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-005 to divide a 20.38 acre parcel into two parcels. 4.40 acre homesite parcel number one and 15.98 agricultural parcel number two. With the final map waiver and an exempt exception from improvements located in the AE20 Exclusive Agriculture 20 acre minimum zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 380, east of the road 208 alignment, northeast of Elderwood, and our contact is April Hill. We won't, no comment on that. I will open the public hearing if there's anyone that would like to comment on this matter. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with CEQA and state CEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to construction and location limit numbers of new small structures and conditionally approve the tentative parcel map number PPM 16005, the final waiver and exemption for improvements to a driveway.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
And the vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We have a site, final site plan number PSR 16-003 and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-012, Jay and Brandy Zeig, James Winton and Associates. This is a categorical exemption and final site plan number PSR 16-003 and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-012 to allow the division of one 40 acre sectional parcel into two parcels. Proposed parcel one is 6.66 acres. Proposed parcel number two is 33.48 acres in the PDFM, Planned Development Foothill Combining Special Mobile Home Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Road 238 and Avenue 226, east of Lindsay. Our contact is Dana Metlin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. This is really just a tentative parcel map, but because of the zoning it requires a final site plan also. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA. The project is compatible with this exemption because the variance, oops, because it is just a parcel map and one additional house may be located on parcel two. And entitlement is found in Section 16 of the zoning ordinance, which authorizes the filing of... Something is up here, but we do have, the entitlement is in Section 16 for additional... Okay, sorry. Sorry, this is not going very well today. General plan consistency. Wonder if I have the right project here? Somehow, we're messed up. Well, I have the right project. Is obviously wrong. So, there is a final map waiver requested here, and this project falls within the category C for the waiver whereby any parcel of land which is being divided into two parcels regardless of size, when the original parcel has frontage on an existing public road and no portion of the parcel is located within an urban area boundary. So the project is consistent with the general plan according to these applicable policies. And this is the project location. Please. Can't read that. This is the site, and the tentative parcel map, the division is according to the driveway entrance. This is located on top of a hill. In the PDFM zone, which is the planned development foothill mobile home. And this is the site plan, the tentative map. Proposed parcel one will be located, is proposed to be 6.66 acres, and proposed parcel two is 33.48 acres. The well for parcel one will be located on parcel two, is down in this area. And there is a 15-foot wide well and pipeline easement proposed from parcel one to parcel two. And both parcels will have direct access to Road 238. And, sorry for the confusion, but staff is recommending that you approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and conditionally approve the final site plan, PSR 16003 and the tentative parcel map 16012.
So, it's a good report, I read it, so you didn't confuse it, which is easy.
I confused myself. I think I opened up the wrong packet up here, and I'm trying to...
It's a good report here.
Do the zone variance for the parcel map. But that concludes staff's report. Do you have any...
Just one quick question there, just for clarification. So parcel one is shaped in order to take in the access road?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And there's no, is there farming on that? Is there anything?
Well, it's, there's maybe vacant land. There's, they may do dry farming, but it's on top of a hill.
Yes.
So, it looks from aerial photos that...
Yeah, that's what it looks like. But I do see right over next to it.
There is farming in the area, but I don't know that there is farming on the site.
Okay, I will, thank you, Dana. I will open this for public hearing. Do we have any comments from the applicant? Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Jim Winton, business address is 150 West Morton, Porterville. We don't have anything to add to the staff report and have no objections to the proposed conditions of approval. So, if you have any other, any questions related to the project, I'll try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Any comments from the commissioners? Going to close the public hearing. If there's no comments, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and the Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR 16-003 and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-012, and waiver of the final map.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will need to recuse myself on the next two.
The next two? Okay, thank you. Aguilar, anyone else?
Oh, okay.
Don't take a nap. Okay, this is for a zone variance number PZV 16-002, Plainview Mutual Water Company. A categorical exemption and zone variance number PZV 16-002 to allow a 10-foot fence that may encroach into the front and side yard areas on a 0.34 acre parcel in the RAM zone. The site is located on the northwest corner of Avenue 94 and Road 198 in the community of Plainview. Our contact is Dana Metlin.
Okay, thank you. So this one is categorically exempt, and it is compatible with this exemption because the variance is solely to allow an additional height to the fence. Fences are allowed up to six feet high, and the request is up to 10 feet high. Entitlement is found in Section 16, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation. The project is located in the urban development boundary for the community of Plainview, and the land use designation is mixed use. The proposal is consistent with these applicable general plan policies. Project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments regarding the project. And it is located in the community of Plainview on the far southeast corner, Avenue 194 and Road 198. The zoning is RAM, which is Rural Residential, Special Mobile Home Overlay, and the surrounding properties are all zoned RAM and AE40. And they contain rural residences and agriculture. And this is the site plan, and the fence is around the western and the northern perimeter of the Plainview Park, in that area. The zone variance, this is a variance from the provisions of Section 15(c)(2)N of the ordinance pertaining to a fence or wall not more than six feet in height may be located along the side and rear lot lines. And this project, if approved, would allow a 10-foot-high fence that may encroach into the front and side yard areas. This is an aerial view. And there are mandatory findings for a variance. The first mandatory finding is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property involved, and this is the site for the Plainview Park, which is a rural community in the southern part of the county. This park is adjacent to single-family residences on two sides, and the fence would provide separation and privacy for the residences from the activities occurring on the subject's site. In addition, the scope of this variance is only to allow additional height to the fence. The second mandatory finding pertains to the fact that the granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege and consistent with the limitations upon other properties. And there are approximately 350 other properties within the urban development boundary of Plainview, and this park is a public use to benefit the general public and which all residents will be able to utilize. The third mandatory finding concerns consistency with the zoning regulations, and the variance is to allow the 10-foot fence, which is consistent with zoning. And the fourth mandatory finding is with regard to general plan consistencies, and the granting of this variance would assist in protecting and retaining the public park use, which encourages and reinforces the goals of the Tulare County General Plan by strengthening the local community. And staff's recommendation is that your commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and conditionally approve zone variance number PZV 16-002. And that leads staff's report.
Commissioners, yes?
You know, back in 2001 or 2002, we were revising the fence ordinance, and it just, it kind of died, you know? And the problem is, this is, this is clearly not a problem 10 feet, but it's when you go to Porterville, or we have an island in Visaya, there it says seven feet. So what happened to that revision of our fence ordinance, Aaron?
Commissioner Whitlatch, I do not have an answer for you, but the fact is, you know, six feet is the prototypical standard, and whether you say six or seven, you know, none of that really requires engineering. So, this is purely for parks purposes and to make sure that none of the, there is no nuisance to the neighbors at this location.
Maybe you could check into that revision of our fence ordinance.
We could definitely look into that for the commissioners.
Oh, right. It's been 12 years, so...
I do have, I have a question. Is 10-foot the normal use height for around parks and...
Just to clarify, this is a community park on where a well was established for the Plainview Water Mutual. The park is going to have a half-court basketball, if you look on page 10 on your packet, it kind of has a footprint of the park. There's a, there's a half-court basketball set up as well as a play area. The 10-foot fence was designed because balls going over into people's backyards, things like that, so that's why they requested the 10-foot fence. The neighbors all understand, in fact, there was a lot line adjustment on the neighbor to the west to accommodate the fence and all this. So, everybody there is notified, understands, and is with it. The height is 10-foot because of the basketball. The comment about extending into the setback area, that's because it extends further into the front yard, which in reality is the side yard of the neighbor to the north, further than what would normally be allowed to be built out towards the street. So that's what is creating an envelope for that park to keep the park activities kind of confined into that and not affect the adjacent property owners.
And is there, I didn't, I was looking through this, and I couldn't find, is there privacy screening or anything on it? There's going to be...
I believe there's slats.
Oh, there are slats.
Yeah, there's slats.
Okay.
It's going to be a cyclone fence, is it?
Yeah.
I was looking through here, I didn't see the materials or anything on it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions by the commission? I'm going to open the public comment period on zone variance number PZV 16-002 if there's any comments that the public would like to make. None? I am going to close the public comment period. And do we have a motion on this?
I have to do it, huh?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 CAL Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve zone variance number PZV 16-002.
I'll second it.
We have the vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Caliano.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Aguilar recused. Yes, thank you. If we have a, item C is a general plan amendment, GPA 16-001, and change of zone, PZ 16-002. Greg Nunley Driven Construction, DR Mata Consulting. This is a petition for a general plan amendment and change of zone on approximately 2.5 acres of assessors, parcel number 15-170-1011. Changing the land use designation from Moonee Corridor Area to Mixed Use and the zoning designation from Exclusive Agriculture 20 acre Minimum AE20 to General Commercial (C)(2) within the urban development boundary of Tulare. The site is located on the east side of Moonee Boulevard, approximately 1,700 feet north of Prosperity Avenue, east of the city of Tulare. Our contact is Aaron Brock, as I can see.
Chairperson, Caliano.
Aaron, just quickly.
Commissioners.
For my information, we're limited to a certain number of general plan amendments per year.
We're limited to four, and...
Is that a calendar year?
And that's within the calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity, too, that's, that's the adoption at the board, so therefore, we have another general plan initiative, or application that we went with in the city of Porterville. When, when this, assuming that the commission approved this, that will be packaged at the same time going to the board next month with, with the one in Porterville, so it would be considered one general plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Whitlatch.
Commissioners, I am Aaron Brock, sitting in for Chuck Prizelbilske today, and the project is for Nunley Driven Construction. It is a general plan amendment and change of zone. By way of overview, we talked about the applicant. The location is within the Tulare Urban Development Boundary. It's located on the east side of Moonee Boulevard, approximately 1,700 feet north of Prosperity Avenue. The request is for a change of land use designation from Moonee Corridor Area to Mixed Use, and we'll have a little bit of a discussion about that. And it also includes a change of zone from Exclusive Agricultural 20 acre Minimum to General Commercial (C)(2). The vicinity, as discussed, was just north of Prosperity, within the urban development boundary of the city of Tulare. As you can see, it is within the urban development boundary and urban area development boundary for, urban area boundary for the city. And here's the aerial site, and you can see it's adjacent to existing development to the west. Now, in a little bit of discussion about the Moonee Corridor area itself, that was a designation that allowed commercial land uses all along Moonee Boulevard. The board has since rescinded that designation, but they did not necessarily put anything else in its place, so it can still be looked at for commercial uses or activities. And that's the yellow highlighted area you see. That's the yellow highlighted area you see. The existing zoning, of course, is AE 20, and that's what we're looking for as far as a recommendation for the board to change for a commercial use. The project is a change of land use designation from the Mooney Corridor area to mixed use and the change of zone to AE 20 to C2, and it's, the project itself is to construct a 8,000-square-foot office shop for Driven Construction, a commercial use. Here's the site plan. You can see the warehouse and the office as well as the parking area. And there is fencing along that whole back area to fence off the irrigation district and the project from the side yard as well. Tulare MOU, as part of the preparatory process per the memorandum of understanding with the city of Tulare, the county has reached out to the city through the project review process. You have letters in your packet from the city. I do understand the PRC letter was incomplete, but the actual letter from the city of Tulare for this project, as part of what you're reviewing today, is complete and is in your packet on page 46. The county has, the general plan initiation was also brought before the city and the general plan amendment to discuss the project and to listen to their concerns. We have addressed their concerns and our findings. The Mooney Corridor right-of-way, including setbacks to conform to CAL Trans, was one of the city's concerns. The project itself does meet the CAL Trans setbacks, and I understand that the applicant has discussed this project with CAL Trans. The city village designation was a question. County mixed-use designation, as we found, is comparable to the village designation the city has as far as commercial uses, so we believe that is compatible. And as far as city development standards, the proposed site generally meets the city development standards and, upon annexation, would hook up to the city's infrastructure. So we're okay on roadways, we're okay on water, and we're okay on sewer as far as meeting Tulare County's requirements and, in the future, meeting the city of Tulare's requirements per the MOU. The SR 63 right-of-way, as I just discussed, CAL Trans is acquiring right-of-way to SR 63 at some point. CAL Trans right-of-way requires a 69-foot setback from centerline. The applicant and CAL Trans are concurrently working on an agreement between the parties to comply with the SR 63 right-of-way. CAL Trans comments will be incorporated into building permit conditions, which have already been implemented.
So, Aaron, what you're saying is the location of the building here on the site plan might change?
No, the location of the building does meet the, it was proposed design and is being built with CAL Trans right-of-way already being considered.
Okay.
So that's, that's a done deal.
Looked like it was pretty close to the road there, I was just curious.
That's the, with the, with the right-of-way.
Okay. Well, if they want it that close, that's up to them.
Aaron, could you go over again the Mooney Corridor use, as it is now?
The Mooney Corridor area plan itself allowed commercial in all that yellow highlighted area. It was really for mixed use. They wanted to do economic development along that. The board basically revoked or pulled back that use for these areas, and it would have reverted back to its initial use if they had declared a use. So as far as we see it in our findings, we're still using the area plan for the fact that it was anticipated to be commercial along the whole Mooney Boulevard corridor, but as far as the RVLP, we did that anyway under the MOU, but we wouldn't necessarily consider that a strict adherence here because it was considered for commercial. So, yes, it's agriculture in nature, but when we do the RVLP analysis, it is with the, in our minds that the board at one point did anticipate this whole area to be, to be commercial uses.
In your mind?
In the lead agency's determination of the findings in looking at the intent of the Board of Supervisors to the, removing that designation to our current situation now, it does, it does match. It does meet. There is no special consideration here necessarily because at one point that was intended to be, to be commercial. The agricultural zoning is something that's also being changed to commercial, and as I'm about to get to, we did the RVLP analysis regardless. So I'll, I'll get to that point in a second.
Yeah, if I, just for clarity for the chairman's sake, the Mooney Corridor concept was back in the, I believe, 70s, and, and it was, it was abandoned by, by the board many, many years ago, many years ago. But there was no different land use designation assigned to it. So it was like a dormant land use that really didn't have anything associated with it. However, so it wasn't converted back to ag per se, it was just left as Mooney Corridor area, but there was no plan associated with that. Irregardless of that, so it's kind of just out there in limbo, we, the staff, prepared RVLP analysis, everything as if it's zoned for ag, as it is zoned for ag, and, and as if it were designated ag. So we did an RVLP analysis on it, and I believe he'll, Aaron will go through that, and we, we did it, analysis just as if the Mooney Grove, or Mooney Corridor wasn't even in existence because it's just a dormant thing, it just is, it's, it's, the designation is still there, yet it's not tied to anything because the plan is not there. So it's kind of a dormant type of thing. So we went with our standards for ag, we went with our standards for urban development ba, within the urban development boundaries, we went with our MOU with the city. So we went as if it was designated as agricultural still, but it, but technically it's not, so that's why we had to put Mooney Corridor area in there because technically that's what it is designated as, but there's no, no design specifics for that because there is no Mooney Corridor plan.
So, Chair, Chairperson particularly honor.
I guess I didn't clarify anything.
Very confusing.
Maybe this will help clarify a little bit. As far as, let's go back to our general plan, general plan consistency. The urban development within UDB Subject to Chapter 2 Planning Framework, Section 4 and the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Tulare would allow this planning commission to recommend a change to the general plan and the board to approve one. So regardless of what we say the land use designation is, we can change whatever it is to something else. General Plan Policy 1.2 Urban Development really pushes urban development within urban development boundaries. So this is within the urban development boundary of the city of Tulare. Under our MOU, a project may be suitable for general plan amendment if appropriate under the requirements of the RVLP. So regardless of where we're at exactly with the underlying land use designation, we did the RVLP regardless, and that would be true for all agriculturally designated lands. And we got a value of 6, which is about as, as low as you can go here, meaning that it is appropriate for development at this site. And it has a lot to do with the adjacency to existing development. It has a lot to do with the uses in agricultural purposes, which was limited, the irregular shape of the lot, future plans for development by the city as a village. So all those were brought in to get to that 6-point RVLP threshold. It's not 11, it's not in the gray area. This is right at 6, so this is something we can definitely change the land use on and the zoning and allow for development. And to further that point, General Plan Policy 4.8, General Plan Designation Compatibility, Tulare County's mixed-use designation allows obviously commercial, residential, and industrial uses on, on the same site. So this is comparable with, the village designation also has a mix of uses, which allows for commercial and residential, and this is a commercial use. So this, this makes it compatible. So again, regardless of what we say the designation is today, it's gone through the full general plan consistency analysis for a general plan amendment, and this commission can recommend approval of the general plan amendment. Furthermore, in regards to PF 4.10, City Design Standards, the county may ensure proposed development within the CAC UABs is compatible with future sewer and water. Again, we talked about roadway infrastructure as far as design standards, we're not talking city design standards here, we're talking CAL Trans design standards, and that's what's being built at this location per the agreement with CAL Trans. As far as water and sewer, there is a condition that this project will hook up to city water and sewer upon annexation. The pro, and therefore, this project will generally be compatible with city standards. The CEQA?
One question, Aaron. Getting back to the CAL Trans right-of-way. There was comment here from, from the city's letter that CAL Trans might not allow access there, and they're only at the connectors and, and at the mile section.
Well, I'll, I'll let the applicant come up and talk about some, some more of that. No, we, we have not, we've talked with CAL Trans on this.
I'll, I'll just make this comment that there's actually a turn, a left turn lane pocket right there immediately for their drive approach, so that was one of the better features of this location. It's lined up directly across the street from the winery, and there is a left, there's a left turn lane pocket directly into the thing, so that, and it's halfway between the two roads. CAL Trans generally doesn't, they, they like fewer access points to their roads as possible. This was set up and identified and actually has a left turn lane pocket into their property already in existence.
Okay. Now that makes sense, yeah?
And just as another point of clarification, we, we've had various discussions with CAL Trans on this project already, so it's, it's all in place as far as the, going towards the agreement and as far as the logistics of access to the site and the setbacks.
Aaron, excuse me, Aaron. In the conditions of approval on page 15, it talks about 31, CAL Trans is saying the project is planned for a 69-foot setback from centerline, and then 33 says that the CAL Trans recommends a building setback of 35. Just so I'm clear, is that, does that mean the 69 is for the roadway to the project and just the building is 35?
That, that is a suggestion, not mandatory requirement.
Okay.
But yes, there is a difference between the, the setback they're requesting or suggesting.
And the building setback.
So 69 is their ultimate right-of-way, they shouldn't need any more than that. Environmental document was a categorical exemption, which is proposed for a building that's less than 10,000 square feet, so this would, this project itself would be exempt for the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15 OC, oh, 3C. So that completes staff report. The recommendation is that the, to, from the planning commission to the board of supervisors that recommend that the board of supervisors approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to Title 14 CAL Code Regulation, Section 15303(c), pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, 10,000 square feet, and recommend that the board of supervisors approve General Plan Amendment Number 16-001 and Change of Zone Number PZ 16-002. And that absolutely completes staff's report.
Thank you. Do any of our commissioners have any more questions before I open this up for public hearing? Thank you. Okay, we'll now open this for public hearing, if the applicant has anything they would like to say.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I've got a cold. I'm Darlene Mata, representing the applicant here. We have reviewed all the conditions of approval and would concur with those conditions. Want to thank staff for the time that they spent on this project. It is confusing because of that land use designation that did anticipate a commercial development on the Mooney Corridor, however, due to the repealing of the plan, I'm guessing it's confusing to me as well. It's kind of in a limbo. I do appreciate staff's conservative approach to analyze this as if it was strictly a land use of ag and a zoning of ag, so I think you got the most conservative analysis. It is an irregularly shaped parcel, and we anticipate accommodating a construction office and a shop in this location. I mean, regarding to the CAL Trans question, CAL Trans, if they wanted to restrict access completely at this location, they would have indicated so in their letter. They have not indicated that to us in our conversations with them. As a matter of fact, as stated by your staff, this is probably the best place to have an approach because there is that break for the winery across the street. We are agreeable to providing them with the right-of-way that they need for their ultimate expansion of State Route 63 and would be able to accommodate that with this development. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise, we would concur with staff's recommendation and would request your support as well.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Just as a quick clarification, I did give you an email that was sent from Chuck to the neighbor, the Cardosis, in regards to any spray painting of the fence at this time. It is the responsibility of the Nunleys to clean, clean that up. The other point that was made to the neighbor was that the city ultimately would hook up sewer and water to this location upon annexation, so just as a point of clarification.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments at this time that we'd like to make? Please, come forward. List your name and address, please.
David Machado, 2586 East Prosperity. I farm the adjacent property. I don't have any problem with a commercial building going in here, but my concern is on this, the C2 requested zoning allows a variety of commercial uses, including shops, restaurants, service stations, and other uses. Down the road, if he decides to put a restaurant there, is that, is that going to be compliant with this variance? I, I can farm, I check with the ag commissioner, there's no special things I have to do except for the normal compliance. But you put a school there and things changes. You put a restaurant there, things change. What assurances are there that this stays a commercial shop?
Good point.
Well, the zoning might be, allow it, but it'd still have to come before planning commission and whatnot for, for an approval on a deal like that, would it not?
Not necessarily. He brings up a point that zone, zone, you usually don't have conditional zoning, although we have put conditions on this. Long-term, when you're talking about future potential for, for retail or commercial or residential or whatever, it is in the, in the city of Tulare's community general plan for designation for village, and that's why we put the, the, the most applicable to comply with the city as far as their future plans for the overall area, which actually includes your, your parcel at some point in time. I don't feel that, that there would be future, any development changes until such time as the whole area is built out, but that's already baked into the cake with the Tulare's designation as village for that whole area.
But this little island is, gets to do what it wants to. If it wants to put, with this approval, if it wants to put a restaurant, it can put a restaurant.
You're, you're, you're correct.
That would, that would be my concern. I mean, I've already got one letter because I raised too much dust on the corner when I was farming. All I can ask for is more rain.
If, if, if the applicants want to address this and potentially put another condition of approval in this, that, if they're open to that.
Once this becomes real public, everything changes.
And as far as schools, we will tell you that we don't have jurisdiction over schools. They share with us that they build a school there.
I don't, I don't see anything with schools going in there, but you have to list it on all your permits when you have something close, including restaurants, gas stations, whatever might go in there.
Very true. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. At this time, we don't, I'm sorry, Darlene Mata, PO Box 7354 in Visaya. At this time, we have no plans to do anything but the construction office and the store, the shop. I do understand the gentleman's concerns that when you change the zoning, you allow literally everything that's allowed in that zone. I would anticipate, and maybe staff can comment, it would have to go through a site plan review process, parking, all those other considerations that would be required. We would be agreeable to a condition if you so chose that would limit it to this use until maybe the surrounding area is developed. We would hate to have this then be a little pocket if the village... We would hate to have this then be a little pocket if the village goes through and we can incorporate that into something. I don't think there's any issue with that, but we would like that stipulation that until the adjacent area undergoes a plan for development.
Thank you.
Potentially wording, using upon annexation?
Upon annexation.
Because that's when, that's when the city would be going forward with their, their development plans for village and that.
Or, or development, even, I don't know if somebody in the county would want to go do that. I just would like, if somebody submits a plan for development in the surrounding properties, that we would be able, that condition would go away.
Until urban development on adjacent properties?
Yes.
That would be more consistent with, the reason we came through with a category exemption is based on the proposed uses as opposed to anything goes. So that would be consistent with our CEQA analysis. And staff can incorporate that condition into the resolution if the planning commission chooses that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, hi, I'm Leonard Cardoza. I spoke with Chuck regarding, regarding that. And I just wanted to reiterate.
Your address, please.
Reiterate the graffiti thing.
If you could give us your address, thank you.
Seven eight seven three Sonoma Street, Ventura, California.
Okay, please, go ahead.
So, you know, the fence that's there now is clean and it's very attractive. It's attractive both to the eye and I'm sure to graffiti people. So graffiti tends to breed other issues. So, you know, we'd like to keep it clean. We have families that live in the area who like, you know, be concerned for their, their safety too.
Thank you. I think they tagged that right after they put those slats in there. I watched it. Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, I am going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion or any other comments by the commission at this time?
I think that we need to add to that, Mike said, at the time, development happens to the area, whether it is annexed or not. I think that the neighbors who farms that, I'd like to see him raise his hand to say that, yeah, that's okay. Stated that. The.
The applicant.
The applicant is going to agree to not do anything other than what he's doing now until such time as the surrounding property develops. So add that, and then I'll make that motion.
Just, I just have one, one comment, and not necessarily against this or anything, but I, I just don't know that it, it seems to me it's just not real prudent to go and, and amendment, to amend the general plan at two and a half acres at a pop. You know, it seems like when you amend it, it's a larger, a larger area so that you can develop it. Get a bigger picture of what's going to happen there instead of two and a half acres at a, at a pop. So that's the only concern that I have on this end here.
Just to respond to that, the uniqueness of this site is such that it's, it's a triangle, small. And when you take out consideration of the ultimate right-of-way, only about an acre and a half of usable land. Farming operations really can't, it's challenged to do that. So it's a unique factor there. A commercial building isn't allowed in agricultural zoning because it's not necessarily an ag business. So therefore, if, if this was a tractor repair shop, or if it was a feed shop, or something that was a directly ag-related service or, or that, then that's probably, we would be sitting here with a use permit, more than likely, for a use permit for, for an ag service business to go on ag land. But that's not the case in this. And following our general plan guidance and policies for urban development type of activities to occur in the urban development boundaries, this is, this is the mechanism to get to having a commercial spot on this unique, small, triangle-shaped lot.
I think it cleans up the use, Ed. We have some control over the paint on the fence and I see your point, I agree with you.
Such an odd little piece of land, it's.
Well, Ed has a good point. I think that maybe the zoning variance of a construction could be more related to the ag than the zoning variance is related to the change of the general plan. So maybe this one's appropriate here because it's an exception, but we definitely got to consider that for the future on these small parcels.
I'll make my motion if we're ready.
Ready, thank you.
I'll make the motion that we recommend the board supervisors to approve a categorical exemption with the CEQA and pursuant to Title fourteen, Code Regulations, Section fifteen three oh three C, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, ten thousand square feet. Recommend to the board to approve GPE General Plan sixteen dash zero zero one and Change of Zone Number PZ sixteen dash zero zero two.
What else?
And add the condition as I stated earlier.
As discussed. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second to motion.
Dong?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Eliana? Thank you. Okay. Do we have a planning director's report, update?
Thank you. I'll just touch on a couple of things. Economic development-wise, we're still dealing with a number of, of companies that are looking to expand in the ag business sector. So there's going to be some projects that'll be coming your way probably here in the, in the not-too-near distance, but they need to remain confidential this time, so I can't shout my name here. I'd like to introduce a staff from RMA, Kat Serna. Maybe some of you recognize her. She's, she's done some work with economic development as well as working with the bottled water program and others. I'll let her introduce herself and just say a little bit about herself. Put her on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Washam. My name is Katerina Serna, I do go by Kat. I'm pleased to be here today and gain some understanding on how the planning commission process works. It is something that I'm kind of behind the scenes working on with RMA, and I'm really glad to be here. Thank you, guys.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself. You're not going to get off that, I see. Where, where'd you go to school? Where, where'd you live?
I'm currently a business major, business management major at Fresno Pacific University. I'll be finishing up my bachelor's this year or early next year. I'm very excited to get that moving. However, planning has definitely introduced a lot of different things, a lot of different interests outside of business. So again, it's very exciting.
Were you raised locally?
Yes, my parents are both from Woodlake, California. I'm not too sure if you guys are familiar with that.
I'd say we are.
Just a little.
But I was a Golden West graduate, so Visalia area.
Welcome aboard.
Anything else, Mr. Diaz, that you'd like to know?
I have a.
I always liked good-looking girls.
I have a research question maybe to think about.
Okay.
This bottle, I've been looking at this bottled water need and the way that we are supplying it. And I also realized that in some of these situations, a well is being put in with public money, you know, so that this, a lot of this problem can be alleviated. And my question is, in the national park, we have these refilling machines that are tied into an existing water system. And anybody that walks up there can take a water bottle and fill the bottle up.
Okay.
Instead of having to deliver truckloads of bottled water, it seems to me that if we have a decent well in these areas, maybe a community well, then we could establish these refilling stations. They filter the water, make it taste good in the cases where it doesn't, and provide this service a lot more cost-effectively and not have all the ridiculous water bottles laying around when people went to you.
I'll, I'll, I'll take, Kat works every day, hours on end with applications for the bottled water program. And I understand what you're saying because usually up in the Forest Service, it's like you're camping, you fill your five-gallon thing, you put it on your picnic table and use it to.
Well, no, these are, these are even different. These are water dispensing machines now that are in all the national parks. They're not in the forest.
Oh, okay, well, I'm unfamiliar with that.
They're relatively new, and we've done stories on them. And you just, anyone can walk up there, the water is free. It's not like a campground spigot, but it provides a really good source of water. And I'm wondering why we couldn't look into those for the county.
Well, and that's, that's a good suggestion. We did look at that for Seville. We were going to have a, a type dispenser system set up there. But we went ahead and drilled, we got the money to drill a new well and repair the system, so we did that. East Porterville, the state's looking at hooking up up to five hundred houses. So they're looking at a final permanent solution. That's a good idea for, for the drinking, an alternative for drinking water versus bottled water. We did have the filling stations early on. People would come with their own containers, even fifty-gallon barrels and put in the back of the trucks and do that filling. Now, we've, we've gone beyond that a little bit with the temporary tanks and all that. But that's, that, in certain locales, that could be a potential option for a transitional period of time to, to get a permanent solution.
Well, I know, and a lot of these communities, I guess I'm looking at the big picture down the road here, but a lot of these communities, you know, the people aren't encouraged to drink water. They, if they're going to drink something, they go and get a soda. So if we had this, these good refilling stations, even young kids riding their bikes around might, you know, grab a water and start drinking water. And that, I think the key to this is that there's twelve tablespoons of sugar in that soda. And if we could have them, kind of wean them over to drinking water and water's free, then maybe we really got something here.
I, I was in Mexico a couple of years ago and at the, I noticed outside of Mazalon area and at some of the schools and some of the, the smaller villages out there, they have filling stations like that. At the school with, on the side of it, it's Quanah Club from someplace in, in United States has donated the system in there. You see that throughout, throughout the area for drinking water. And that would be a good potential source that we'd have.
I know there's grant monies available for that too, because the parks certainly tapped into them.
Maybe one of the problems in some of those communities is finding a spot to drill for good water.
Yeah.
Even when you drill, it's not good water. You know, it's, you're going to have to have a whole filter system on it to.
Absolutely. And that's where we're going through in, in the Alpa, Allenworth area. We're looking at that because of arsenic levels and looking at treating that to be able to, because they have water system in place, it's just the water's not good.
Right. Well, if we get good water, I think this is the way to go.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Woodlake. My son-in-law's principal at Castle Rock School.
Oh, terrific.
Robert Gonzalez, so.
It's a beautiful town, and it's really developing nicely. You have to have vision, I think, and, and I think that whoever's responsible for the development there is doing a great job.
Well, it's Ramon Lara, pretty much, he's the city manager, Woodlake graduate. And he was also on TCAG as the person who sought grants. So he brought that money to Woodlake. You won't even believe how they transformed that downtown area.
It's really a different place. If you haven't been there in the last few years, you would run away.
And then throw in the botanical garden with that, and you have really a place that's worth visiting.
Absolutely.
We got the Berry Festival Thursday, too.
That's Saturday.
You got the restaurant at the airport.
Yeah, which is really good.
Let's all go to Woodlake.
We got some attractions.
It's a must-see.
I think we need to charter a plane from Visalia and go out there.
Well, thank you guys so much for having me.
Welcome.
Yesterday, the board, we brought forward tree moratorium plan. I know that Commissioner Elliott was, was in attendance.
It was the tree mortality is what it is.
Yes, the tree mortality to, and it's a plan for removing, we're looking at the right-of-way of, of our roads up in the, in the mountains. There's a number of trees that have died that are in the right-of-way, that potential falling that could block access to the roads for, if there is a fire, for emergency evacuation. That, so the, the board was considering that and, and made a commitment of a quarter million dollars, which will be placed against three-quarter, the state has got, will pay three-quarters of the load. So that would be basically a million dollars towards it. But it's just a drop in the bucket of what needs to be done. It's anticipated that it would be about thirty-six million dollars to remove all the trees that are dead within the county right-of-ways. And that's just the county right-of-ways, let alone private property and others. That's just the right-of-way. And so this would just be a drop in the bucket for doing that. But at least it's a start and it gets us moving in the right direction. Looking at the federal, the Fed for potential emergency funding as well because of the dire need for that. Also, the board yesterday brought forward ATP grant applications, I believe for twelve communities for sidewalks, safe routes to school, those types of things. I, I think it's anticipated, we're applying for about eighteen million dollars worth of grants. We've been very successful. We've done this last about three years. We, first year, I believe, I can pull this up. We can, we applied for. In, in two thousand and fourteen, we applied, we had seventeen applications and we received three projects for a total of eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And that was for some projects in Tulleville, Terabella, and a complete streets countywide planning grant to plan for future ones. Then in two thousand and fifteen, we submitted eight applications, were awarded three projects in Pixley, Traver, and Early Mart that totaled three point three million dollars. And now this year, we're applying twelve, twelve applications for, which would total about eighteen million dollars. We'll see how successful we are, but that, that application will be going forward very soon to the state. So we've, we've really been active in, in getting those sidewalks built in the community. It's really a big improvement for the children walking to school and, and it's really, it has a transformational value to the community when, when you go from walking on, you know, in the dirt or potholes or across people's yards and whatnot to having a nice, uniform sidewalk, curb, gutter. It really, it really improves the neighborhood, so.
If we can just keep the adults off the sidewalks on bicycles.
Well, that's why the bike lanes and trails really go along well with this program because it gets the people separate from traffic and from the pedestrians. And it, it's a great place to put a water filling station too, by the way.
Well, Terabella does have a water filling station by the park that's set in pistachios, pretty, and they have a, a community water filling station there.
It's a thing of the future. I think we're going to have a lot of them in Tulare County.
A question, Mike, on this back of the tree mortality issue, the trees in the right-of-way, are they going to be removed or just, just fill?
Well, that's, that's, there, there, it's estimated that it costs about a thousand dollars a tree to, to have it just down, not, let alone removing it on average. Because some will have to be sectioned as they come down, others can just be dropped. But most of the ones in the, the right-of-way are so close to the road, they're probably, a lot of those will be sectioned to be able to get down. So there are plans, we are talking with, there's, we, we're strategizing how to get the trees out. We're strategizing useful opportunities for those trees. We've talked to, I've talked personally to a couple of developers that, that have a wood shaving facilities that would like to maybe look at opening up some more wood shaving things to supply basically the, the equestrian needs for the LA, greater LA area. And, and so we can shave those down and ship them down to LA. So there's, there's opportunities. People are starting, you know, when, when you have a free market society where businessmen are out there, they start sniffing around and they're saying, oh, if I can get free wood, now maybe I can do this with that. And so we're looking at opportunities there.
I've, you know, I've also been told, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish your.
I was just saying, and, and they're shutting down the cogen plants that burn that stuff because of.
Right.
Is there any way that, or is there any place up at the higher elevations that they could build a cogen plant like that and get it out of the valley? And the trees are already up in the hills anyway.
Well, they, they're talking with port, some portable sawmill operations and some portable chippers and, and other things that go in to try to eradicate. I haven't heard of a proposal for actually a cogen factory out there, but, you know, plant up there, but.
Well, historically too, it's a lot easier to get them down than it is to take them up. And the park and the Forest Service, the park especially is, and I know they're going to participate in this program, their expertise is to identify hazard trees and give them a priority. So we don't have to go in and take everyone out. So we don't have to go in and take everyone out, but the ones that are going to fall, they need to come down right away, and that's what the priority is going to be of this.
But they're about five years behind.
Well...
That should have been done about five years ago.
Well, the thing is, is they're still dying, so we're getting trees now.
It's estimated there's going to be another 25 percent.
There's 20 million trees approximately in Tulare County.
But I have heard from the trucking industry that a lot of the, this is kind of an interesting aside, a lot of the, up in the hill, the truckers that truck down the raw logs down that have stopped, maybe they've parked their trucks and haven't been working because there hasn't been work for, they're all back working again. They've, you know, gotten their trucks revitalized, and I was talking to some people up in Madera County that, you know, there's some of those men up in those hills that they've just, they stopped because there was no money, and now they're back because there's no work, and they're back working and driving down, and you see some of those, you know, a lot more trucks coming down. So it's, you know, it's a bad thing, but at least...
Yeah, there is a good sign.
The economy is, you know, coming out to bat, so...
They should chip those trees up, and there's a whole bunch of cotton modules around and compress them, and you could bring a whole lot more down at one time.
Ooh, that'd be a heavy load.
There might be a way to do it.
What'd you say? It's denser hauling it down in a tree than it is to put air in it?
Well, if the trees don't fit, if you squeeze it, I think you can get more in.
Oh, I don't know, it's pretty, a tree's dense. Think about how dense a tree is.
There's to float them down.
Yeah, 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 maybe we could get some flumes going again, huh?
Well, they do.
Well, if we had water coming down, that would...
Have to be air flume.
We got water this year.
We got water this year.
Thank you. Do we have more?
I'd just like to inform the commission that the RPT project was appealed to the board, so we'll be taking that to the board. I don't have a date set yet, but in the near future, we'll be taking that to the board.
No surprises.
Surprise.
Hector, do you have anything?
Not much, you know, obviously behind the scenes, we do SEQA, so every time we're doing even this, this, say across two schools or whatever we're doing, the ATP, we do SEQA behind the scenes. It's quiet. They're all public benefit projects, so we really pretty much go forward at exempt, and usually they'll go forward like when the board is ready to approve a project and let it go out to bid, and they take that same action, so SEQA's then covered, so that works out really well. So we're quiet back there, but we're getting it done. In regard to the tree mortality, I sit on that task force, too, and there are a lot of issues, and we've brought in a lot of players that's with it, including cogen plants. And as Commissioner Diaz pointed out, maybe one up there would be good. Well, they cost a lot to do, and they have to undergo an environmental, too, so that's something that would be difficult for them.
Harder getting it up there, probably, with all the tree huggers.
This is a part of them, like when I worked with Valley Air District, we actually had a program with the state of California that paid $10 per wet ton to, I guess, do an incentive and to subsidize their hauling costs. So 10 bucks per wet ton pretty much covered it. I hear just about 40 bucks a wet ton now, so, ew, not sure about that. There's a lot of dynamic going on, a lot of conversation. Southern Cal Edison is doing their part. I'm not trying to say anybody, because you've got to keep the transmission line there. So that's tough. The governor's executive order allowing a lot of the effort to go forward, basically a way to SEQA. So everybody knows this is such a public benefit and it's such a hazard out there that, you know, come on, why go through the analysis when the inevitable is going to be, it's a hazard, it's got to be removed? But that doesn't, we were excused from complying with regulations. Now, whether it's a stream bed alteration because some of the work might occur near a stream bed, whether it's a different type of permit from Water Quality Control Board, whether it's an air district permit, you got to do it. You know, you're not exempt from that. So people kind of get confused on that. I just want to make a clarification that they're exempt from SEQA but not from permitting another environmental project.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you know, the sawmills, we don't have a lot, we only have one here in Tulare County, and they're just overwhelmed. I understand they have about an 18-month supply of timber that they need to process, so what are we going to do with all of this wood? As Mr. Washam pointed out, as soon as you say, free this, come and get it, just pay the hauling costs, yay, you know, they go do it. One of the difficulties that we have to overcome is each one of these trees that have been identified as dead or dying, a professional registered forester has to put an X on it and say, knock this guy down, every single tree, you know, that's ridiculous, so we're hoping to work around that. So Cal Edison, Cal Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, Cal Fire, the parks, they've all volunteered to send folks, professional registered foresters to X these trees so we can just get them out of the way and remove them. Some are found on private property. Some of these trees are big, you know, these things are either fire damaged or beetle damaged, and, you know, they're talking about, you know, 200-foot tall tree, all the time it was, either way, you've still got 75 or 50 percent of, yeah, 75 percent of the tree still out there. So it's a huge task that's being confronted, and a lot of behind the scenes involved, like the governor's office, that level, that was taken, I understand, was the board of supervisors spoke to that issue when they did their Washington DC trip. So there, where the California has a lot of issues. Trees are continuing to die, you know, so we may have some right now, but in the next few years, if the drought conditions continue, more bark beetle, more fires, more hazardous trees, so just want to expand on that a little bit more, that to let everyone know. It's a big dynamic out there. There's a lot of players involved, and there must be 40 people in the task force who are involved from various agencies, public and private sector, between biomass utilities, and biomass, they have to sell their power, too. That's, they're not getting the rate they want. It's not, it's not cost efficient for them to operate, so there's a lot of stuff going on. So the, we're going at it, we're trying to get more funding, but we got to match, and the match is kind of expensive for us.
I'm wondering if any of this is, the trees that get mulched, Hector, is there any quality to them in terms of mulch?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking, you know, if you're into the environmental issues and the sustainability, all of that, you know, if you take that, mulch it, and then make a requirement that all government agencies, including the public, be afforded the opportunity to use that, mulching medians strips, public areas, homeowners, I mean, we're all talking about conserving water. Mulch conserves water when you put it on something.
Makes sense.
So it seems to me that's a, that's a big industry waiting to happen someplace.
That's what happens to the city of Visalia, is green waste.
And it doesn't have to happen just, you know, in Tulare County. Tulare County can export that product elsewhere for the same program.
There's so much wood out there that can be turned into lumber that there's even discussions and, you know, we're brainstorming everything.
But who would take action on that? Who would drive that kind of a program?
Well, I don't know, like...
There's a statewide task force on this, and that's where it's going through, it's going through Cal OES.
That's like, it's there now, the piles are free. Anybody that wants them can go and get them, fill your truck up. They're just, they're everywhere.
And we're talking, the quantities that we're talking about is enormous.
Unbelievable.
And Caltrans is utilizing it for their, for their medians and their interchanges and all that. But there's just, the one thing that would help, and this is the issue that we're already facing before we get all of this wood, is the issues with agricultural trees that are coming out and all of that, and with the cogen not getting their subsidies on the electrical rights, that's why they're closing up. So one, I've put this forward to the committee, to the task force, our local task force, as far as trying to get those subsidies put back in, that might alleviate, that might allow these cogens to keep operating and...
Yeah, keep going.
And help alleviate some, but it's still just a drop in the bucket compared to what the need is going to be on this.
Right. Unfortunately, the only thing that's going to fix it's a huge fire. It's...
Let's hope that didn't come. That's a terrible air quality concern, too.
Oh, it's huge, it'd be a disaster.
Because a rough fire was worse than any of the emissions from anything we could do with this stuff, I can tell you that.
Now, one time when I was at, we had nine biomass plants, and there was a $7 million a year program, the air district qualified for about $5 million of that, because we mathed it out and said they're far more efficient at burning and closing and contained environment and then generating electricity than it was open burning these products. But that is ag, this is different. These are big trees that are, you know, four inches in diameter, just formals. Formals that have been brought up by Caltrans and Cal Fish and Wildlife, and there's like two or three of them that's not enough to get the job done. They're willing to cut these things to four-by-fours as posts and give them away. You know, that's, they're just trying to think of everything, but those take resources, that takes manpower, that takes energy from electricity or diesel engines, so there's a lot of give and take, but you have to outweigh the benefit, like the fire hazard reduction is a big thing, you know, and the bark beetle elimination is another big thing. You remove the trees, less draws drinking water, more water comes downhill to us. So there's a lot of factors that are being weighed in.
Sure. More sunlight, more feed for the life, for the animals.
Correct, absolutely.
It's just...
Hopefully we'll...
Even, even if there's a huge fire, our view is so narrow, and we only have one lifetime to worry, to be concerned about. But in the long run, the thing, it's going to probably be a benefit to what's going on there, because we've had so many years of fire suppression up there that...
There's a good sign.
It's going to come around.
When I worked with the air district, I also worked on prescribed fire doing, they had said 80 years of successful suppression has resulted in what?
A disaster waiting to happen.
All the fires, but you took away the natural fire return interview and cycle. You have all these ladder fields, you'll have all these brush fields, you'll have all this dust that has built up, and it's, and they want it to behave naturally occurring. I says, well, you guys have a natural fuel oiling. You know, how's it going to behave when your typical manzanita bush used to be three, five feet in diameter, now they're 14, 15, 20 feet? That's a manzanita tree, not a bush. So a lot of that has changed, so they do a combination of tearing, thinning, and then, you know, a lot of stuff, but we'll get there eventually, I think.
Yeah, a lot of, we have abandoned our charcoal plants. Used to see them out in the desert, you know, in Springville, you see these big domes, and they would just stack wood in there, probably not too environmentally friendly, but they gathered the charcoal out when they got done, and...
Even that's a disaster when you burn it.
It's propane.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Eric Coyne made a good point, too, at that presentation, that this is really a threat to, you know, national security, because a lot of the infrastructure for power goes up through those forests, and there's a lot of hazard trees in the way there. So that's going to kick in another funding sources, you know, the national security aspect.
Anything else? I think we have a...
For him?
Yeah, just Freddie Belltramp, here with Public Works. I just want to touch up on what Mr. Washam mentioned about the ATP project, Arbella, you know, we talked about Arbella, another project that was awarded a year or two ago. We actually completed the construction, you know, and not completed, and we're in the process of starting again on Tulule. We had a temporary suspension, but the connectivity there along the group of, and the summer, we plan on doing a couple more safe rock school projects within various communities and within the county.
Great.
Program.
How's the road on Bear Creek? The bridge? Built a new, new bridge on Bear Creek?
In fact, we are in the preliminary stage of that project.
Park construction, when, or?
They'll have to set it out, that's probably, Bear Creek Road, thinking about maybe let next fall or something.
Anybody else? We'll adjourn.
I got a future agenda on it.
Oh, well, then, you better give it now.
Yeah, I have a future agenda. One of the constituents of District One contacted me about a, an aesthetic plan for Highway 99 that his planning collaborative have, has produced. He forwarded a copy to me. I can get it to Velma, but he had requested a brief, maybe five minutes or so to present that.
That's fine, we can print that on. Actually, when we took the, we brought the 99 four-door plan...
Yes.
We, actually, within that, are some of his very ideas are incorporated in that plan. We actually, he gave us access to that ahead of them, TCAG actually looking at that, and we incorporated some of, some of those.
Yeah, I noticed, going over that plan, would it be appropriate to have him come in and just...
He can, we can set him up and have him come in, give a presentation if you'd like.
I think it's great information. I looked through the plan, and there's some stuff that really makes sense in there.[1763.47]